Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Springfield Township Board of Trustees Public Hearing. Today is June 13th, 2023. The time is approximately 4:30 PM. Mr. Burning, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, Ms. Davis, Mr. Burning?
Present.
Mr. Honolaw?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
All the trustees are present.
Thank you. So there are two cases on the agenda for tonight's meeting. ZC 2023-001 is a text amendment and ZC 2023-003, reference 6300 Daily Road. We are going to begin with case number ZC 2023-003, reference 6300 Daily Road. In both cases, Ms. Kennedy will present the staff report. The board will ask any questions of staff regarding the staff report. The applicant will have an opportunity to present. The board will ask any questions of the applicant. There will be an opportunity for opponents who would like to speak, then an opportunity for pro-ponents who would like to speak. Then we will close the public portion of the board's deliberation. Are there any questions about the order of the public hearings? Thank you. So at this time, I will turn this portion of our hearing over to Ms. Kathleen Kennedy.
Thank you, Trustee Dukes Davis. So the first case, we're going to go a little out of order on the agenda this evening. The first case we're going to consider tonight is case ZC 2023-003, 6300 Daily Road. The applicant is seeking approval under the Springfield Township zoning resolution for a zoning map amendment from R4 Multiple Family Residence District to RPUD Residential Planned Unit Development. The applicant is Mr. Robert Sanders of Sanders Development Group, 1941 Ray Street, Suite 102, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. The property owner is Daily Creek Investment Group, LLC, at 6300 Daily Road. The location, again, is 6300 Daily Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45224, Book 590, Page 0210, Parcel 0283, Section 19, Township 3, Range 1. The site description and surrounding conditions are outlined in the staff report. Section 26.10 of the Springfield Township zoning resolution outlines the requirements and procedures for approval of a preliminary development plan and zoning map amendment. As portrayed in the submitted application, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from R4 Multiple Family Residence District to RPUD Residential Planned Unit Development to construct 30, 1,500 square foot townhomes on the site. The subject property has been vacant for many years, previously having been a nursing facility. I actually have some photographs here. The submitted site plan shows six structures. Let me pull this up here again. With a central green space, these structures contain anywhere between four to six townhome units with a ground floor, two car garage for each unit. The site plan shows a one-way access drive around the rear and side perimeter of the The site plan indicates that the structures will have ground floor garages with two living floors above. A 40-foot setback is shown from the front of the lot facing Daily Road and 30 feet setbacks on the rear and sides of the site. The central green space shown in the center qualifies as open common area space as defined in Section 26.06. The proposed green space comprises approximately 15% of the total site area. The submitted site plan also shows eight proposed off-site surface-level parking spaces in addition to the two off-street garage spaces per unit. Okay, I measured the average annual daily trips at 11,120 just outside the site on Daily Road, and based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers standards, this development would add approximately 210 daily trips. As a part of the review process, the board should determine if the applicant's request is consistent with the township's adopted land use plan and development strategies for this property. As the board is aware, the Township Board of Trustees adopted the Comprehensive Neighborhood Master Plan update in 2016, which also serves as the township's land use plan. The township's land use plan depicts the subject properties as multifamily residence, which is defined as detached or attached housing and related compatible uses, typically two- and three-story buildings with scale, massing, density layout, and specifications compatible with site constraints and character of existing residential developments in the surrounding area and where more than one occupant uses an entranceway for access to individual units. On May 4th of 2023, Sanders Development Group, the applicant, held an open house in the Township Administration Building and invited all property owners within 200 feet to view the proposed site plan, renderings, and speak with those involved in the project to ask questions, make comments, and give suggestions about the proposed building and use. While the open house is not considered a formal part of the zoning process, the open house setting allows those most impacted by the development to voice any concerns they may have and connect with the applicant in case any future issue should arise. On May 4th at the open house, approximately five adjacent property owners attended. Of those in attendance, some property owners voiced concerns about existing drainage issues and how this development might exacerbate said issues and potential automobile noise heard from the rear of the site. At the open house, the applicant stated that they hope that the proposed multifamily development through greater residential intensity will create more advocates for the area, potentially driving McAvoy Park improvements in the city of Cincinnati across the street. As outlined in Section 26.10 of the Springfield Township zoning resolution, the application was first considered by the Township Zoning Commission at a hearing on May 15th, 2023. At the hearing, the zoning commission heard the report as given by staff, the applicant's presentation, and questions and concerns from adjacent property owners. Again, concerns from adjacent property owners were mostly related to potential water issues and noise from the proposed development. After hearing all of the information presented by staff, the applicant and adjacent property owners, the zoning commission voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of the application to amend the zoning map and approve of the preliminary development plans to the Springfield Township Board of Trustees. So the zoning commission, again, makes a recommendation to the board with the following five conditions. First, that the applicant shall adhere to all requirements of Hamilton County Public Works for water retention and runoff. Second, that lighting, landscaping, and signage plans shall be submitted as part of the final development plan application. Third, that the applicant complies with all requirements of the Hamilton County Engineers' Office regarding traffic impact. Fourth, that all other zoning requirements, unless otherwise noted, on the submitted site plan and/or approved by the zoning commission or Board of Trustees, shall be in accordance with the Springfield Township zoning resolution. And finally, fifth, that the applicant shall meet with all other regional regulatory agencies within Hamilton County for a pre-development meeting to ensure compliance related to permitting before the submittal of a final development plan for the zoning commission's review. And Trustee Dukes Davis, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions to staff regarding the report, Mr. Honolaw?
Well, the one question that came up, and I know I had received a call about this, was water. Is water something that we're even, that we're permitted to take into account in this zoning hearing? I guess that would be a good way to frame the question.
Sure. Mr. Honolaw, it's not. Water detention, retention, water impacts are regulated by the county, Hamilton County Public Works and Stormwater District. So it's not something that's even regulated by Springfield Township and definitely not something that's considered as a part of the zoning map amendment hearing or application or the preliminary development plan process.
And so that would come through the developers' dealings with Public Works?
That's correct.
And complying with the stormwater regulations. Is, do we know, well, we can address this to the developer, the applicant, yeah. Okay. And under R4, if we were to not approve this under R4, what could we be looking at?
Yeah. So being zoned R4 currently, the code would allow approximately, you'd have to subdivide the lot as there's about 200 feet of drainage on Daily Road, but you could construct approximately two four-unit buildings with a rear setback requirement of about 40 feet. So this is about 10 feet closer to the eastern property line being proposed. The nice thing about, I suppose, the nice thing for any adjacent property owners that have concerns is that through this process, again, the next step after this hearing, if the board were to consider approving this application, is that the applicant will actually have to come back to the zoning commission with a final development plan, which would include things like landscaping plans, lighting plans, essentially your full construction set, where the commission can place conditions for approval based on some of those things. With straight letter zoning as it is today, we would have no say in how close the parking lot is to the property line, for example, landscaping, material used, that kind of stuff. So there are pros and cons certainly, you know, to either route, sticking with the R4 zoning versus having someone interested in developing, go through this rezoning process, if that answers your question, Mr. Honolaw.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Don't have any.
Now the applicant has an opportunity to present his or her case to the board. If you'd like to stand up, approach the podium if there's anyone here on behalf of the property owner.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robert Sanders, principal owner of Sanders Development Group. I'm here to answer questions mostly, but definitely wanted to thank the committee for the recommendation and thank the residents, actually, too. As a developer, sometimes you show up in neighborhoods and no one shows up, and we're actually appreciative of the feedback. We held the open house so that we could gather as much intel as possible so that we could do something and develop in response to some of those different concerns. And so we're really appreciative of the opportunity, and we'd like to develop where residents actually care. So we're excited about the opportunity to develop on this site, remove a blighted property from the building, and put eyes on that park that's across the street. And so any other questions, we're here to answer them, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Go ahead. This says the townhomes. Are they rental or sale townhomes?
These would be rental.
Rental, okay. And is there, do you know, Robert, do you know, is there water, I don't see any water detention in this. Is there underground detention?
Yeah, we're at the conceptual stage, so, you know, upon getting approval, that gives the developer the ability now to throw dollars at advancing civil drawings and all of those different things, along with our architects and Alvar, to educate us on, you know, what's actually on the site and, you know, what sort of easements and things like that that are in place. So we plan on learning that as we go through the architectural process. These are just conceptual plans, this could, you know, it can reduce by a unit depending on what we learn, but right now it's conceptual.
So if this is conceptual, we're not approving that layout per se?
The preliminary development plan only requires essentially this level of detail. So to Mr. Sanders' comment, you know, this kind of gives him the green light to go ahead, you know, if the board were to consider approving the application at this stage, to do a little bit more due diligence as far as hiring civil engineers, to come up with detention plans or retention plans, whatever that may be, which is required for submittal in the final development plan application.
Gotcha.
So this is still, you know, preliminary, kind of conceptual to Mr. Sanders' point, but when, if and when he were to come back for final development plan approval, the submission can't be drastically different than what he's showing today. So, you know, it may change by a unit or two, or some of the roadway configurations may change slightly, but this is sort of the level of detail that this stage in the process would require.
Okay. The only thing I, the only thing I noticed, I mean, it does look fairly dense, and it looks like there's maybe eight, there's garages underneath each of these, correct?
Correct.
And then there's eight, maybe you could say visitors' spaces?
Yeah.
There's a lot more than that.
No, there's eight guests. According to the drawing, there's eight.
What?
According to the drawing, there's eight?
Yeah.
Guest spots or visitors' spots.
Right.
Plus you got the driveway that people can park in as opposed to the garage.
Right, right, okay. You could put a car there. Okay.
What rental, dollar per square foot or dollar per unit are you looking at?
Right now, our initial projections are anywhere from 1700 to 1900.
Two bedrooms?
Three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms?
Yeah. Or two bedrooms and a den, depending on the family makeup.
And remember, you said these were 1,500 square feet?
Yeah, square feet, yeah.
15, 16, 1600, 1600. And we're still goofing around with, you know...
Right. And here it's like 1,500, but it's not a big difference, 15, 16.
Correct.
So one of the other issues that the residents raised was the potential noise that would come from this development. Have you planned out any, any plan to address potential increase in noise around the property?
Well, one, you know, obviously the property's blighted right now, so it's, you know, incredibly quiet. We do expect with some residents, residential folks being there, that there will be some, you know, naturally occurring noise that residents typically make. But our hope is that, you know, this development, you know, outweighs any, you know, anything of that nature that's disruptive to the adjacent property owners. Also, too, we just heard that preliminary in our last meeting, and so our plan is to have further conversations around what that looks like. For example, some of the feedback we got was the properties to the rear, maybe they're a little bit too close. So one of the things that we would do is, my architect is trying to see if we can move that a little bit further west, if that makes any sense. But any and all concerns from our standpoint, we plan on having conversations with all the adjacent property owners. And actually, last week, we toured the swim club just to begin assessing, you know, the existing conditions of it, seeing how we could complement, you know, what's currently exist at the swim club. So that's kind of our approach to anything that we do. That's a great question.
Ms. Dukes Davis, one other thing to, I guess, consider to answer your question is that, you know, this site was originally used for a nursing home. It's been vacant for a number of years, but that would have brought, at that time, some traffic and noise just with staff and residents and visitors and things like that. To the north, there is the North Hills Swim Club, which is very active today, again, kind of bringing some traffic and visitors and residents. And then there is a multifamily apartment complex just to the south. So, you know, when considering a zoning map amendment, surrounding conditions are important and should be taken into consideration, those are some of the conditions that are surrounding the site.
There's a drive-through and another commercial building just west of the multifamily.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Is there anyone here in opposition? Can you state her name? Dan, can you state her name? Could you just state your name and your address, please? Thank you.
Robin Hindley, 6341 Ridgefield. I am not in opposition to the development in general. I want to go on the record for that. I, more than anyone, would like to see something there other than that vacant nursing home because I'm directly behind it with the exception of maybe 10 or 15 feet on the west side or the north, or south side property line. My concerns from the beginning are first and foremost water. George and Jan Smith live immediately to my, looking out my kitchen door to my left, which would be to the south, and then his neighbor, Warren, is on the other end. We are at the crux of where the water is impacted. When I bought my house in 1999, the previous owners had put in I-beam supports on the entire one wall of the basement. It was a hydrostatic pressure problem caused by excessive water runoff. I was comfortable buying the house because they had all of the engineering plans when Val came in and did the completion. I had them reviewed by an architect who basically told me, and I shared this with Kathleen, it was the most over-engineered repair on a residential property he had ever seen. And he said, "If there's ever a tornado or a storm or a nuclear blast, stand against the I-beam. Your house may disappear, but you'll be fine." And that's exactly what he said to me. So I was confident in doing that, but he did caution that as time went by, natural ground shift would cause some of the water to displace itself, for lack of a better phrase. So I ended up putting French drains in the basement at a cost of around $4,000, and I took my spouting and extended it out. If you look at my backyard, you can clearly see, you know what a break is. You play golf, mine breaks five different ways. So depending on how rain, how hard the rain comes down, that depends on where I have to chase water from. I've almost got it down to where I have no basement water problems. But these last few storms we've had, George and I have stood at our back doors and watched the fence line. The water comes right up to the fence line now. If that drain back there or that drainage ditch is not scrupulously clean, it comes in our yards. You know how water works. Once the absorption's there, it backs up through your pipes in your basement. So yes, we do have concerns on that. I'll caution Hal, I'll say this. While I have confidence in the township to look out for my best interest, I do not share that same concern with any office in Hamilton County. They don't care about the townships. They care about them. And that's based on the loss of institutional knowledge at that governmental level across the board and watching it happen when I was employed by them for 16 years. So that's why I want to make sure that our concerns are on record. Water's first and foremost. Secondly, the density of the units. If you look at an aerial map roughly and you look at the back of the nursing home, which is basically an inverse L, the apartment building, the carryout, and so on to the Happy's Pizza, generally, the actual building placement is in more or less a straight line. This brings it much closer to our fences, particularly when the intent down the road is to maybe bring these apartments all the way down to the corner. I'm a little nervous about having that cut, having traffic that can go all the way around the building. You can't put any kind of a reasonable buffer there. That's already been looked at twice in the last two attempts by other individuals to get the property, not rezoned, but conditional use permits and variances and things of that nature. An arborist has said twice now, "A natural buffer is not acceptable because there is a swell that goes to the aquifer." And you have a fairly significant slope from the edge of the parking lot down to where it comes in, it gullies out, and then it runs right up to my property line, all of our property lines. The last survey that was done, that I completed when I bought the house, the property line to the rear is roughly about six to eight inches from where my fence sits. So when I repaired and replaced my fence, I put my fence on my side, so it got me further away from the line, so I was not encroaching on that property ownership. If you have that many units on a footprint that small, you're definitely going to have water problems. Now, Mr. Sanders stating, you know, his internal courtyard, so to speak, would take care of that, that's not true. Water doesn't work like that. It's not like a wetland swap where you're going to do a development, you have a wetland protection area here, and you say, "Well, we want to build there, so what we'll do, let's give you five acres over here to replace this." That works under that legal condition. But when you're talking about water runoff, it doesn't work that way. And that amount of courtyard space isn't going to compensate for changes to the pavement configuration, concrete basis, the footers, people parking in these internal garage areas, it just isn't going to flow that way. And with, you know, climate changing causing rain to be more severe for shorter periods of time, I can just see what's going to happen. And the fact they're close to the property lines with traffic, you've got that many people, you've got toilets flushing, you've got washers running, you've got dishwashers running, you've got a lot more drains, drain activity. Now, when that nursing home was built, it was built in 1965. Ridgefield Drive was constructed between 1949 and 1952. When the nursing home came in, that's the original building, there's never been rear entrances. That back door was never allowed to be used for employees. From the day I moved in, they had to park their cars, walk around to the front of the building, and go into the same entrance that visitors did. It was always in the front. There was no traffic in the back. The only noise issue we had was when they tipped the garbage dumpsters at 4 o'clock in the morning. And that was long before the township entered into the multi-county situation with Rumke where they've got a limitation, I believe they're not supposed to start till 6 o'clock. So we've got a timing factor here. The houses were there first. Now, if anything goes in from a residential point of view, that's fine, but it should not encroach upon that timeline nor encroach upon setbacks and potential water issues that we may be facing. So that's where my primary concerns are, and they continue to be so. If you put a change in zoning in place and there's an argument down the road, you have two attorneys, maybe more in the room, I don't know if you are, but someone can hold you to what that designation states, and I just think consideration needs to be given. I just want to make sure that I go on record, that's the way I feel about it, and I think the neighbors, if I can speak for them, probably have the same concerns.
I think it's important to note, if I may just jump into your, just given my experience dealing with a lot of these type of developments and cases, in my experience dealing with here with the County Public Works, and I'm not going to argue with your point relative to the county agencies at this point, Rob, however, I will tell you that they generally err on the side of over-engineering retention or detention of stormwater than the inverse. I don't have to point any further than our own property back here and our Public Works facility where they required us to create detention that's probably three times as big as it needs to be. So they generally err on the side of more as opposed to less. And in this case, I think, anytime there's a new development, if this was simply rehabbing the existing building, I would be more inclined to agree with you regarding the potential water issues. But when you now scrape a new existing building, you're developing the site, so to speak, and moving dirt around, you have now the ability that you don't have today, which is to make the water situation even better than it is today. And they will be required to do that. The requirements that the county has in place when they look at developments like this is to ensure that if the impervious surface area increases, which it will at this, that it cannot shed any more water from the site than what it is today, and in most cases, it's much less than it is today. So additionally, there are civil engineering drawings that would have to comply with the preliminary plan, that would have to be reviewed at a final development plan process here. So there is a check and balance to your county's concern that regardless of what they require them to do, we will have it looked at at the final development plan process to ensure that the stormwater calculations are correct.
All right. One other question that came up, too. We want to clarify, is this truly going to be market rate housing? In other words, the tenants that will be renting these units, are they writing the check to the landlord for the full market rent? Or are we looking at something that's the new wave? Or are we looking at something that's the new wave, project-based vouchers? In other words, it's a new label for Section Eight? Instead of a, to the consumer qualifying and taking that voucher to a permissible and a willing landlord, the voucher is attached to the unit? Is that what we're looking at here? Are we looking at the actual tenant paying the full market rent? That was another concern that came up.
I just want to make sure that it's clear that that isn't a part of the zoning consideration at all.
Understood.
And it's really not something that I, a road, I think that we should go down as far as this hearing. I mean, if it's something that you want to discuss with the applicant after the hearing, you can, but I'm not comfortable kind of going down that road at this public hearing. Because it's just not, it's just not at all part of the application.
And frankly, it's not constitutional to consider that for zoning.
No.
Okay. That's all I have.
The one thing, Robin, the one thing I would say is if you look at the existing site plan there, there's not a lot of green space that, you know, as it exists now, and if that was built in sixty-five, that was built way before all the, all the Hamilton County stormwater regulations on construction run, you know, on construction, post-construction runoff. And, and I, I can tell you from some developments, developments I've been involved in, they're pretty strict on, on, on water detention. And it's not just something where you can, you know, it's not like you're saying, "Well, we're going to take some green space here to offset what we're losing someplace else." They make you, you know, you got to input the whole, the whole drainage system in so that the impervious surfaces don't just run off to the neighbors, but they drain into the water detention, you know, plan with underground drains. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. And, and I guess if I can just add one thing before we, you know, hear any more questions or comments from anyone else that would like to address the board tonight. Would it be helpful if I read through the required conditions for approval of preliminary development plans, just so we make sure that we understand, you know, exactly what is required? In fairness to the applicant, things like water detention or retention, or how that's going to be engineered, or anything really outside of these conditions, required conditions for approval are, outside of the scope of what he was required to consider for this hearing. Would it be helpful if I ran through those conditions for approval quickly?
You can. I, I think you're saying maybe we're getting the horse ahead of the cart.
Kind of putting the cart before.
Yeah, the cart ahead of, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So just, just quickly, I just want to remind the board and everyone else who is curious what the conditions for approval of preliminary development plans are. So first, that the application is consistent with the adopted Springfield Township land use plan, which in this case it is. That the uses proposed will not be detrimental to present and potential surrounding uses, but will have a beneficial effect, which could not be achieved as well under other zoning districts. Third, that the internal streets and primary and secondary roads that are proposed properly interconnect with the surrounding existing road network. Four, that the site will be accessible from public roads that are generally adequate to carry the traffic. Five, that the minimum common open space areas basically have been met in the application. And then finally, that the preliminary development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of this resolution to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of Springfield Township. So, so those are the considerations of the application, really, at this point in that process.
Gotcha. And, I mean, the one thing, and I know this has been a concern to some of the neighbors in that part, but we do have this dilapidated nursing home that has sat there for a long time. And it really is turning into a blighted, you know, blighted area in the township.
I don't know that there's much potential for reuse of the existing structure.
Right. It's a demolition one where the, right.
Right. So I didn't mean, if there's anyone else that has comments, questions, concerns, they're certainly welcome, but I just thought I-
And again, there's been no objection to residential development. We'd love to see something back there.
Yeah.
Because that place is hot mess. And I'm concerned somebody's going to get in over there and fire. And it's close enough. If the winds are blowing right, it could hit us, it could hit that apartment building, it could do a lot of very bad things. It's just the water and the density proximity with those lines. That's where the problem is. I just think that there's a density issue. That's a lot of units for a land footprint piece that's that small. It's not that big.
Are these photographs, like, I don't know what page this is, twenty-two or twenty-five, are these representative of what would be built? Are they just conceptual, or is it? I think maybe we should-
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Harlow-
They're conceptual.
At this point, these are-
And that would come, like that? That would come-
At the final development plan process.
Okay.
Yeah. Right.
Which, again, has to, it has to meet that as well.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Meg Hammond, and I have been a member of that swim club for longer than I care to say. And it has been a part of the community. A few years ago, it was in financial trouble, and some of us said, "We need to do this for our community." And so we bought it. I am the proud owner, along with some other people, of a swim club that I haven't gone to in a couple of years. My question, my, my comment is really about the quality of life. I look at it, and I, I know the next, I can remember when the old people used to sit on the porch in the nursing home, and we'd wave when we were going into the swim club, and it was all lovely. And it's gone now, so we have to move on. But in looking at the drawings, I think there are too many units on that space. And when I see the projection, and it looks like you're building right onto the, practically the sidewalk onto the street. We have that in College Hill. They built it right on the sidewalk. There's hardly any green space. It's two, three bedrooms. You're going to have kids. Where are they going to play? In that little green strip? There's not enough green space in this, in this development. You certainly don't want the kids crossing daily road. It's not safe, even at the light. There are people going through all the time. Another thing about quality of life is the fact that the swim club does have swim meets. There was one the other night, last Thursday night. And they were two small swim clubs. Ours is not a big swim club. And again, it was against a smaller swim club. There were absolutely no, because across the street at McAvoy, football was, football and cheerleading has been going on for years there, in the summer and into the fall. That's part of our community. There were no parking spaces whatsoever in the swim club. They were on the grass, they were all in courts, basketball courts, everywhere they could because of both activities going on. Then when you put in there a, a residential with only eight parking spaces for guests, you've really going to have a problem on those event nights when you have both McAvoy and the swim club busy. And they're going to want more, the, if the residents are going to be trying to park on the street, there is just no parking at all. It's really getting to be a dangerous situation. So, it's not, again, I'm not objecting to having some units put there. We need them. Springfield Township needs them. The swim club is not against it at all. We'd like to work together. But in looking at it, I think there's simply too many units. And I'm thinking about the kids, and where are they going to play? And we would love to have the swim club working with this department, apartment development or townhouse development to do some good things together. And we're talking about some, the owners and are talking about some things that we could possibly work out with the developers. But I think we maybe need to scale that back a little bit and give a little more breathing room. It's all seems to be so crushed into the one space. It's not that big a space. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Board, if I may, looking at the site plan, just keep in mind that there is driveway where I'm out parking. The guest spot is simply just overflowed, but there are additional spaces obviously in the driveways. And then beyond that, it is private property. So people utilizing parks, actually in the city of Cincinnati, wouldn't be able to use parking on this site either. It's private. It's not public park. So they wouldn't be allowed to park, and probably would be something to be towed again.
Same thing if they parked at North Hills.
But again, all these, the, this is a conceptual plan, and Mr. Sanders, you're here, you're, you're listening to the residents and their concerns about the density and the number of units, and I'm sure you're going to take all that into consideration when you submit final plans to us if we get to that point.
Absolutely. And also, it's also a lot of actually bringing my architect forward, because I want them to hear exactly what comes from the residents, too. Simply just show up and take notes and you go back. For me, I'm on my part, I said, "Here, now these responses, so that we can address them." And we're just taking notes and, yes, we are having conversations with the swim club. And, you know, we hope that the kids play at the swim club, in the green space, and the park, I'm sure.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Sixty-three twenty-one Ridgefield Drive. My concern is that little green space behind those units, the back of the, uh, parking area. There isn't much space as far as from that nursing home to my backyard as, as it is now. Is that going to get even smaller when they develop this apartment complex?
Again, this is just-
This is just, it's conceptual. Yeah. That's, right now, that's just my concern, though. Just the fact that there is only, what, maybe ten feet? If that much, between that property line of the nursing home and my backyard.
And so I have a question, Mr. Sanders, for you. You're in communication with the swim club. How are you communicating with residents outside of these meetings here?
Yeah, it's, it's a timely thing.
Okay.
I've got several projects going on, and, you know, it's just a matter of getting around to the other end. But that's part of our community engagement. And additionally, that's also the reason why we're telling open house, so that we can have a, you know, an organized effort in one place for them to show up and provide us with that feedback. Us going out additionally, it's just part of what we do, generally speaking, for our projects as well.
So are you considering holding another open house or going door to door and speaking with individual residents?
Yeah, a local open house makes a lot of sense, from the standpoint of the adjacent property owners. Our plan is to go talk to the owners themselves personally, because we want to see, we want to point out exactly some of these issues that we're talking about, if, if it's possible.
And Mr. Smith, during the staff consideration, they said it would be thirty feet in the rear. So if you're ten feet now, it'll be thirty feet from the building to the property line.
And I like what he said, when he said something about, if necessary, moving units, you know, forward or taking something out, you know. And I like that idea.
So it sounds like it's important to the residents that they have that open dialogue with you all in this whole planning process.
I just want clarification. Are you thirty feet from the building, the driveway, or the garage, or the parking, or driveway that goes around? Is it thirty feet from the building?
From the building.
From the back of the building. So you have the driveway and the, pointing into the garage, and then you have the street. So really, the green space is going to be about, I don't know, twelve feet?
And again, if the-
If that's, that's how it's shown here. I just wanted to-
Sure. And, and if the, again, if the board were to consider approving this application, as a part of that final development plan process, the applicant would submit a landscaping plan, which is relatively thorough, so we would have more information than about-
Yeah, it's thirty, I just want to make sure it's thirty feet from the end of the building, and then you got the other improvements. That's what I was trying to clarify.
Yep.
And to be clear, it is well within this board's purview to put conditions on a preliminary approval that would then have to be met during the final development process?
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
My name is Robert Penetti, sixty-three twenty, Ridgefield, across from them. First of all, ma'am, I'd like to ask you with the swim club, yours is-
Sir, I apologize. Could you restate your name and address?
Certainly. Robert Penetti.
If somebody admits, and they have to listen to it-
No problem.
-days from now, and they're going to call us, "Who was that? What did he say?"
Robert Penetti, sixty-three twenty, Ridgefield Drive. Ma'am, your property is private property, correct, at the swim club? And you said your entire place was covered with cars from the event in McAvoy Park, correct?
There was a swim meet-
Yeah.
-at the swim club, and there was a lot of activity, sketchy activity at McAvoy.
How many people were parked on your property?
Can we make sure that the comments are addressed to the, to the board, sorry?
I want to know how many people were parked at her property that were not part of the swim club? And if we could figure that out, how are you going to be, take advantage of the people that are going to be living at this place to say that they're not going to drive in through across McAvoy Park and park into their property? If they're already parking in the swim club's property?
Yeah. Parking is-
Yeah. So-
Definitely a question.
That is a major problem right there. So what regards to-
I can tell you, my kids swam there. People didn't, the swim meets bring enough cars that they're really zanbait parking from there.
I've been there for twenty-three years, and I see it myself.
They might park on the street in front of it, but we never, ever had problems with people pulling into the swim club. And they did always park on the grass, all around the tennis courts, all around, everywhere. But I don't think there was ever a problem with McAvoy people parking at the swim club. I mean, I, I was there for twenty years.
Maybe they are at night now when they-
God, I'm just wondering.
I, I don't know.
I don't know either.
We've never had that problem.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if, if that's private property with the new spot, who's to say that they are not going to do, drive into their own park?
Then they can tow them.
That's why I'm wondering. If that's the case, if it would be the case at the swim club, then why aren't they being towed there? If they are coming from McAvoy Park and parking over there?
They could, yeah, it's private property.
It's totally up to the, the private-
Yeah, that's why I'm just wondering about that.
You can create a private tow zone.
No, true. Of course you can. Now, the other problem is, is with as many properties that are going to be on there, they're going to have to do something to that street, would you not? To widen that, to accommodate the eighty or ninety-some cars that are now going to be coming in out of that property every day?
Not necessarily. That would be something that the applicant would have to discuss with, I guess that would be the Hamilton County engineers.
That's what I was thinking, it would also. So that's, would that not-
Right. And that is one of the conditions of approval that was suggested by the zoning commission.
Yeah. So if they have to widen that-
The applicant would have to do all that before this application, or after this application is considered, yeah.
So, but if they have to widen that road, now your frontage is even less.
I don't know that, we don't know that they're going to have to widen the road.
When, when will we know that information?
After this hearing, if the board were to consider approving this application.
Okay.
Here's, here's what happens. If, once this board, if they do approves this preliminary development, they will then have to go into final development process, which means they're going to have to meet with all relevant county agencies, the engineer being-
Yeah.
The engineer will require them to do a traffic impact analysis, which will determine if widening or any additional road work in the public right-of-way is warranted. At that point, if there is, they would be required to do that prior to even yielding a building permit to move dirt. So-
Okay.
They wouldn't necessarily be required to complete the road work prior, but it would be contingent, their, their permits would be contingent upon them doing their road work, meaning they wouldn't be able to move in any one of those units until that road work is done, if, if there's road work that's required, that's the if. I can tell you, given the amount of traffic generating, looking at that, probably not going to require any additional road work. Because frankly, the nursing home probably generated close to the same amount of trips per day that this one. And, and it's done on an actuarial basis, based on their experience in these type of developments as compared to what the previous use was across the country. So I would be surprised if they're going to make them widen an already four-lane road for this type of development. I just want to see it, see it happen. But that's just my-
I'd like to find out about that when, when it comes up.
Yeah, we will, and find out about it, thank you, for sure.
Anyone else? Seeing that there are none, we will close the public portion of the board- Seeing that there are none, we will close the public portion of the board, uh, close the public portion for the board's deliberation.
Motion. So moved. Well.
You don't need to close, you don't need to. Motion's closed.
Oh, we don't? It's closed?
Yes.
Closing public portion of deliberation, you're not closing it?
You don't need to do that by motion.
Yeah, into the microphone. It's still public.
Basically, you know, basically what I see here, um, is, uh, multifamily use of some property that I think is consistent with the land use plan in the township, that this would be multi-use. I, it does appear that the density is pretty, it's, it's about as dense as you could make it, it, it looks to me. And I think as we, as the applicant goes through their process, they need to take into account that density and to make sure that there's adequate buffering for adjoining properties. Um, but given what we have, we have a, a basically abandoned nursing home that I think has been in that condition about ten years. Um, and we could end up with, we could end up with far worse than what's being proposed here. So I would, I would be in favor of approving this with the consideration that the developer and his architect look at this to, look at ways to minimize the impact through buffering, through possibly changing the density as it moves forward. But I see this as a first step in a process. It would come back.
Can, can I make a suggestion for a condition that I think would appease and solve a few issues at once?
Sure.
Looking at this site plan, if you were to eliminate, turn these into sort of five townhomes, make these four lounges each, would one, reduce density and two, allow you to move this unit and six, further to the west, which would then give a greater buffer to the property to do?
I, that was the exact thing that I was looking at. I wasn't gonna maybe give them that, but we can.
My, my, my point is, whatever you decide here today preliminarily, as long as they come back with the final development plan that meets the spirit of what you approved preliminarily, that's what they're allowed to do. So if you want to reduce density or increase green space to the east, you have to do it now.
Right now, it's about twenty-five hundred square foot of land per unit. Even for condos, that's a pretty small amount of land per unit. You know what I mean? Twenty-five hundred, a little over twenty-five hundred square foot per unit for that site. Normally condos are closer to four, four thousand.
Based on the whole, uh-
Right, the one point eight oh nine acres.
Well, with that being, uh, said then, um, it would be, be my thought that we would make, that we, we would approve this, but with the, the additional, the additional restriction that there, that the number of units being decreased by, um, to, to allow for more buffering to the property owners to the east and, uh, help reduce the, uh, you know, the intensity of the overall site.
You saying two units or two buildings or?
Two units per-
Two units out of thirty-two.
Per building? Two units per?
No, but two units off of that one building, which would allow you to move the whole thing, the back-
To the west.
Building to the west.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not every, not every building.
So instead of having five and five, you'd have four and four and then the building would move back.
Four and four.
Oh, why is each unit twenty-four feet? Okay, so then it would allow you to, in theory, widen the buffer to the east by approximately twenty feet?
No, if you did two per side, that would be forty-eight feet.
Two, twelve, one per side.
It's two total.
No, two total.
Taking, taking these-
They go from five to four on the back.
Making four and four.
These are twenty-four feet wide, these boxes, okay?
Right.
Take this box out and this box out, right? Then it gives you additional room to shift everything in this way. So you increase now this space by what these were, which are twenty-four feet. So I would say a good condition would be, since these aren't numbered, it's hard to say, but if you were to number them, one, two, three, four, five, six, townhome four and five would be four units each.
Right.
If, if the rest would remain the same, then you would be able to increase the buffer zone by twenty feet on the eastern property. Makes sense?
Yes.
Can I ask a question to clarify something on, if they have like-
No, wait, wait, wait. The board has closed deliberation. You should take no more questions. Sorry, but it's, they've closed deliberation.
That would definitely help the density.
It would, taking out two, only two units would help?
It would take quite a bit on the buffer on the east side. And it would also, it would also, as long as they don't just have parking spaces there. They gotta move the whole building.
Right. So theoretically, theoretically, based on, I think, the condition that you're considering, it would increase that rear yard setback from thirty feet to about fifty feet.
Really fifty-four, because you're gonna gain the whole twenty-four feet.
Right. I mean, I'm, I'm saying approximately.
And it's gonna be about thirty-six feet of, of ground, sort of.
That one, yeah. This is sort of what we're saying in different buildings. I mean, this site plan shows four.
You would just invert it.
Right.
You could.
Although it doesn't, I don't know that it really makes a difference.
Well, now that-
That wouldn't do anything.
Well, this plan has five of each, Joe. What we're looking at here has five on each.
Well, which drawing, which drawing controls?
Can't you achieve the same thing?
Yeah, it has the easement. The other one didn't have the forty-foot easement, this one does. From the road. Right.
Oh, there's a forty-foot setback on the road. Okay.
Which made us regreg figure the units. When you say easement, you don't mean right-of-way?
Road, road setback.
Setback.
You mean, you mean a zoning setback? Where is the?
The county setback. You gotta be so many feet from the road, don't you?
So if that, if that forty feet, if that were something that we could make smaller, we can shift the whole thing and create a larger buffer on the east. Sure. I, I guess I'm trying to figure out if, if, is it, I don't wanna confuse terms because easement and right-of-way are two very different things in my mind.
Yes, they're very different.
And, and, and so are zoning setbacks. So that can be completely different too. So Kathleen, do you know, is this a, a deed of easement for right-of-way? It's, it's a right-of-way. It's a right-of-way.
These plans show that, that red line as right-of-way. But-
Who owns the right-of-way? County? Is it a county right-of-way?
It is.
It's a county road, I'm sure it is.
Well, they're not gonna let you build anything in the right-of-way.
So just so I'm clear, the picture I'm looking at on my computer is thirty-two units. That is thirty, correct? There's nine on each side and six on each end is thirty.
Correct.
Which one's correct?
He's saying this one.
That one.
So you're asking for thirty, not thirty-two.
The only thing that they would probably let you do is just what you had here, which is your driveways. And they would probably put those in, um, if right of reversal. Those are sidewalks.
Those are sidewalks out to the street. I was-
These are?
Yeah.
Okay, well then they would for sure allow that.
They would love that, yeah.
Then the only way to-
Pick it up, she gotta lose two.
Then you, then you, yeah, then you're, then you're reducing, you're still reducing it by two, but because this is the correct one, you're now four less than what I can sense from the drawing.
Like twenty-eight units.
Well, we're also looking at narrowing the units- Okay. And extending them, extending them a little bit, narrowing them a little bit. Okay, well, I think then, then the condition probably to make it easy is just to say, if you want to increase the, increase space buffer, um, from, meaning from the driveway here to the property line by an additional twenty feet to what's shown on this drawing. And then however they accomplish that, they accomplish. Whether they narrow the units or they lose units, that's entirely up to them.
Well, you look, you narrow the units and then you start losing square footage too.
No, if you make them deeper.
But that's, I'm sure-
Joe, if you narrow them two feet and go deeper two feet or four feet, you won't lose square footage. It'll just be more shotgun than, you know. Instead of twenty-four feet, they'd be twenty-two feet. And then you make up the square footage by going, making it longer. Does that make sense?
I would, I would approach it purely as a setback requirement to the eastern property owner. And then require a, a landscape plan to be approved administratively. That's the way I would approach it. That's the way I recommend it. Because given this plan, given the east, the right-of-way, they're already losing the two units that you were proposing to eliminate off the concept of it. So the, the additional right-of-way coupled with the, the increase in, in green space in the east, you're accomplishing-
Well, and I, you know, I, I hear the concerns of the residents and I think those are valid. And we want to, you know, we want to come up with a plan here that is going to meet, meet our conceptual requirements for this land use in the township and at the same time, not have an adverse impact on adjoining property owners. So I think that's probably a reasonable thing. And at the same time, not tie the, um, you know, the design characteristic, you know, not tie the hands of the developer to the design characteristics. So maybe we say we, that, that the condition of approval would be that we increase the buffer area in the back from what's now probably ten to-
Thirty feet now.
Well, it's thirty feet from the building.
Including the driveway and the, so it'd go to fifty feet.
Fifty feet. I think that's-
I think that's- Or thirty feet from the driveway would be about the same.
As from the building to the property line.
Or longer.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments?
No, I think fifty feet's fair.
So in addition, just so that we're clear, in addition to the five recommended conditions from the zoning commission, it sounds like we're also considering a sixth condition for approval, which is increasing that rear yard setback from approximately thirty feet to fifty feet. Okay.
And so that I'm clear, making that buffer zone larger, will that address the density issue that has come up this evening?
Well, to eliminate two units, that'll make the density a little smaller.
Well, it might, or they might reconfigure the units to try and keep the same number.
But keep in mind that part of the issue with density was taking up more land, therefore less buffer. By creating more buffer, you're in essence mitigating the negative effect of density.
The only other thing I would say on this additional, this additional condition is that it would be subject to a landscape plan to be approved by staff-
That's already in the-
With the final development plan.
That's already-
It's already in there.
Well, it would be a required, it would be a required portion of the application for the final development plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure we're clear.
Yep.
I just have a question. I, if you're worried about the green space, I would address the green space instead of setback from the building. Cause you can make that driveway bigger, you put parking back there. I mean, if you want green space, let's ta, say we want so many feet of green space. Right now with this plan, am I correct? It's about ten to twelve feet of green space?
In the rear?
Yeah.
Probably about ten feet.
So if you want thirty feet, instead of saying fifty from the drop-back, just say thirty feet of green space-
Fair enough.
In the west side of the property. That way, whatever they build there, they need to leave that green space. Does that make sense?
That's, that's, that's a good point too. Fair enough. Yeah, I wasn't planning on moving it, making it fifty feet and then putting in more parking lots, so, yeah.
Right, but they could. I mean, that's not always sad.
It, it could be too, that if we have enough green space, it becomes a park-like space. You can flip those units for the drive on the inside.
Right.
But also mitigate the concern of traffic factor.
Exactly.
If it's a nice green space. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, they're, they're a different way to engineer them.
Yeah, you can do it that, I mean, that'd be fine.
I, I, as an architect, as a designer, I like to have a thirty-foot, you know, and the rest we can play with.
Right, you play with it, but you know you need to leave that green space there. That, that's what I was suggesting to the board.
So just so I'm clear, with that sixth condition, it's increasing the rear yard setback from thirty feet to fifty feet with thirty feet of that fifty being green space?
They're just saying, no, they want thirty feet of green space.
We're just saying thirty feet of green space in the back.
On the back.
How they come up with it is up to them. They could delete a, a unit, they could reconfigure, but yeah.
They're just creating a buffer.
Got it, got it.
Okay.
It brings me to the rear yard.
With those, with that additional condition then, I would make a motion to approve the preliminary development plan.
So moved. All those in favor?
It's a roll call.
A roll call. Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honol?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So the motion was just to approve the preliminary development, is, we need also to approve the zone change? Or the amendment?
Zoning map amendment and the preliminary development plans.
Did we just, did we just do that for the-
You just, you just mentioned the zone change, so just eat-
The preliminary development.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the preliminary development did not mention the zoning map amendment. So just do a second motion to approve the zone, zoning map amendment as recommended.
I'll make a second amendment then to approve the zoning map, uh, as we just amended.
So moved.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honol?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
The change is approved?
We got it? Okay.
All right, so that concludes our hearing.
First hearing.
The first hearing. We have a second application, yep.
Yes, yes, yes. Um, I was going to say that concludes our first hearing, reference, um, what's my number here?
ZC twenty twenty-three.
Second. So I ask everyone to please remain quiet, please. We are continuing on with our second, um, hearing on a public hearing. Um, so I will turn the, um, the hearing over to Ms. Kathleen Kennedy, reference a text amendment, ZC two zero two three dash zero zero one.
Thank you, trustee Dukes Davis. So we're moving on to the next application. Please don't feel like you, um, have to stick around if you don't want to. But, um, this case is related to text amendments in the Springfield Township zoning resolution. So, um, the Springfield Township zoning resolution was adopted in two thousand and four and since that time, the resolution has been amended to respond to various trends in land use, planning and zoning in Hamilton County, Springfield Township and throughout the region. The proposed amendments to the zoning resolution reflect some of these trends to improve the set of guidelines for development in the township with a few other general housekeeping amendments. Um, as the board, I'm sure, recalls, uh, the Board of Trustees adopted resolution number twenty-five, twenty twenty-three and then amended that resolution with resolution number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-three on April twenty-fifth of this year, which initiated the text amendment process as it relates to signage and sign elimination. As outlined in Ohio law code fifty-five nineteen dash point one-two and article six of the zoning resolution, the Springfield Township Zoning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the proposed text amendments at a public hearing on May fifteenth of this year. So the zoning commission has reviewed these proposed text amendments and they, again, make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. I'm not gonna read, uh, these amendments aloud. Um, but I think that as the staff report indicates, these are amendments as related to signage and sign elimination. Um, we're seeing trends in development and you make amendments to the zoning resolution as those trends, you know, carry on throughout time. Um, it's also in- It's also in response to a lot of redevelopment that we're seeing in the township, um, which is exciting, but we just wanna kinda tighten up some of the regulations related to signs and their elimination. So if there are any questions about that, I am happy to answer those questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy, just for having questions.
I don't have any questions, um, but I think that this is, uh, is an improvement over our existing, uh, you know, over the existing code, as it's the, uh, the, uh, the text of our zoning resolution, and I would mo, make a motion to approve.
Seconded. The motions.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings adjourn.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to the Springfield Township Board of Trustees regular meeting. Today is June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the time is approximately five forty-five P. M. Mr. Burning, please have a roll call.
Yes, Ms. Davis, Mr. Burning?
Present.
Mr. Honalaw?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
All the trustees are present.
Thank you, I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes from May, from our regular session, May ninth, twenty twenty-three, our regular work session, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and a special meeting bid opening, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is our fiscal officer, our financial report from our fiscal officer, Mr. Burning.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. For the month ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the township expenditures were two million nine hundred sixty thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents, and receipts were two million four hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars and nine cents. That gives us an ending cash balance of twenty-eight million, forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. This includes obligations for expenditures, payroll, regular operating costs, ongoing capital improvement projects and investments. What I do request from the board is the approval of the receipts, warrants, payroll expenditures, updated and current revenue and reports for the period ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I just want everyone to know that the financial reports are available at the Township Building during regular business hours or on our website twenty-four seven. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Burning. Next, I'd like to turn this portion of our agenda over to Mr. Chris Gilbert for departmental action and discussion items.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. First on the agenda, we have a request to set the date and time for the annual tax budget. So we will require to have it public hearing, as you're aware. Uh, my suggestion would be to have it at our next, uh, regular meeting in July. At the beginning of the meeting, at five-thirty, if that works for, for you all, and I apologize, I don't know that date off top of my head.
July eleventh?
July eleventh, yes, thank you.
So we have that at five-thirty and then our meeting after?
It would actually, the public hearing would be part of our meeting.
Okay. So it's still gonna be at five-thirty?
Correct.
That, that, of course, works, that's fine with me.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Do we have a?
Motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, uh, next, we have a request to set a dangerous property public hearing for eleven thirty-nine Grace Wind. Kathleen, I don't know if you wanna explain this?
Yes, Mr. Gilbert, thank you. Um, as the board is aware, we have, um, at the last regular meeting, the board, the last regular work session, the Board of Trustees adopted a resolution declaring the, uh, existing foundation, remaining foundation at eleven thirty-nine Grace Wind Court, um, as a dangerous property condition. Per our revised dangerous property guidelines, a public hearing is set related to that property if requested by the property owner. So, um, we did receive a request from the property owner to have a hearing related to the remaining foundation on that site. The property owner has requested some, um, extensive time, uh, related to his work on the west coast, he's not in town currently. So in conferring with Law Director Laura Abrams, we suggest that that, um, public hearing be set for the work session, the board's work session, on June twenty-seventh at eight A. M. Now today, um, so that, that date and time was given to the property owner. Today, I received correspondence from the property owner, um, requesting additional time extended beyond June twenty-seventh at eight A. M. Ms. Abrams, I don't know if you wanna make any more comment about that?
Yeah, I, I would say, um, Kathleen and I discussed this earlier, our, our concern is this is a dangerous property, and it is, uh, open to anyone to get into this, it's a foundation. There's debris in there, there's actually, uh, methodology to get in is created by some of the, the, uh, debris. So we are concerned that this be left open for an extended period of time, hence the reason it's a dangerous property. And the owner did come in today, which didn't give us an opportunity really to have any, or the letter did, come in today to really discuss that with him. So I think the best course of action is to go ahead and set the hearing for our work session, and if the owner wants to fence that property or otherwise make it safe prior to that date, then go ahead and grant the extension. But to grant an extension for another two weeks, which makes it six weeks since they were notified that it was dangerous, certainly a longer period of time since it's been dangerous, I, I think is really problematic. And we've, as the board is well aware, we've had difficulty with compliance with this owner, we've been dealing with this property for over two years now. So it's not a situation where we've not given the person more than ample time to, to render the property safe, and there has been requests for continuance in, in the past. So it may be a legitimate request.
That we have granted.
We've granted, and, and, and like I said, we're willing to grant this as long as we're not continuing a dangerous condition for an additional period of time. So, and there's, he's not the only owner, he has, his wife is also an owner, so it's not that he needs to be here, he could have a representative, he could have his wife come, so there are other, in the past, if the court recalls, there was a construction manager who was here, so other people have attended these hearings with him. So it's, he's not the only person who can come to a hearing, and, and this one's actually a pretty simple issue as to what's remaining. So I would recommend that the board really kind of establish two dates so that we don't have to come back to the board. So we establish the work session date, uh, which is July.
June twenty-seventh.
I'm sorry, June, I'm already moving into July. June twenty-seventh at eight o'clock, uh, if we can get the property rendered safe, um, and then otherwise, if we can, I mean, if we can, then it can be extended to the July eleventh board meeting. If we can't, it will stick to that June date, June twenty-seventh date, I think is the best way to do it for all parties. Gives him an opportunity to have his date that he wants, but also protects the public.
And he's responsible for rendering this, this property?
He is, absolutely.
I'm okay with that.
I am, too.
I am, all, Phil.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item I have is to award the, let me back up. As the board is aware, uh, due to the, the flood damage, due to a sprinkler system freezing and busting in our art center back on Christmas Day, unfortunately, uh, we just recently, uh, put the project out to bid, uh, received one bid, given the, um, construction climate it is today, uh, everyone's busy, and I'm just fortunate that we had one bid, frankly. And unfortunately, the bid came in about eight percent overestimate, which is still within our ten percent window, allows us to award the bid, which obviously, given the fact that we have one bid, um, I recommend that we do accept this, this bid, and it's with Trudy and Zimmerman at eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. And remember that a significant portion of this work is to be, um, paid for by our property insurance carrier, um, given the damage was caused by the, the, um, bursting of the sprinkler system. So with that being said, I, I guess what I'm asking for is a motion to award the bid, uh, to Trudy and Zimmerman in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, and then authorize the administrator to enter into a contract with Trudy and Zimmerman for the same pending final legal review.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Lastly, from an action item standpoint, we have in a, in addition to the approved caterer list for the Grove Banquet Center, it looks like we have Lishes Perfect Dishes, uh, at sixty-two eleven Hamilton Avenue, and, uh, Laura, I'm, I'm assuming you've had a chance to review this?
We're actually awaiting one license, so if we could approve this pending final legal review as well, that would be helpful.
We have, so, we could have a motion pending final legal review.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, looking at the personnel update, and we had three resignations in the fire department, which we typically do revolving, or I'm sorry, involving part-time, um, employees, moving on to different positions or full-time positions elsewhere. First, we had Patrick Clemdenon, part-time M.T. firefighter, Matthew Leaper, part-time medic firefighter, and Kenneth Mitchell, part-time medic-only position, all resigned in, um, late May, early June. In the police department, we had the promotion of Amanda Estes to dispatch manager. We had the resignation of Nathan Fornash, police officer, and the new hire of Sean Wright, police officer. And public works was a fairly busy month, Scott's been busy, uh, filling positions. We had the, uh, hire of Vincent Washam, seasonal laborer, the hiring of Ty Brenner, part-time laborer, the hiring of Rick Riggs, full-time laborer, hiring of Brian McDow, part-time eighteen-twenty laborer, and Anthony Litzinger, full-time laborer, hired June fifth. So fairly busy, I, I think they're all working out really well, right, Scott? Good, good. And as I mentioned last week, I'm sorry, last week, last month, in a more informal way, um, we did have the promotion of Scott Shardine to Director of Public Work, so congratulations, Scott, well-earned, and I, I look forward to seeing what you do with that department, so. He is, he is taking over the ship and, and, I'm not gonna say turmoil, but it's been, it's been difficult, given the, the abrupt, uh, resignation of our, our previous director and a lot of the projects that we have going on, and the, the staffing issues and things, and Scott has handled those issues beautifully, and has allowed me to sleep a little better at night than I would have otherwise, so I do appreciate that. Thanks, Scott. In the art center, we had the resignation of Shannon Johnson and the resignation of April McKinney, and then we had the hiring of Morgan Frayley, um, as a bartender in the Grove Banquet Center. That concludes the personnel update, and, uh, Kathleen, would you mind, uh, taking care of Kim's community intervention programs?
I don't know that I can do it with much, as much sparkle, but I'll try.
Probably not, we would never expect.
No, probably not. So Kim has a lot happening this summer, um, starting June sixteenth, which is this Saturday, there is a concert from Second Wind, um, back at the, um, green space behind this building here from seven until ten o'clock. June twenty-first, uh, next Wednesday, is the kickoff event for the update to our comprehensive master plan, that is at six o'clock, um, next Wednesday, June twenty-first, up at the Winton Center Auditorium, uh, at Wyn Woods. June twenty-third, which is next Friday, is the Touch a Truck event, um, so there's lots of neat vehicles that are here, um, public works, police, fire vehicles, but, uh, vehicles from all over the region available for, um, kids and kids at heart to view. Uh, that's from eleven to one o'clock, June twenty-third, uh, again, behind the Township Administration Building. And then finally, July seventh is Blues Brews and BBQ from seven to ten P. M. I think, again, here behind the Township Administration Building.
Thank you, Kathleen.
One, one question on the, uh, master plan update, this says six o'clock, I had six-thirty, is it at six?
I do believe it is six o'clock, six o'clock P. M. Wednesday, the twenty-first.
And then one other thing, I think you mentioned the June sixteenth Second Wind concert, you said Saturday, it's actually Friday.
Did I say Saturday? I'm sorry, Friday, see, I tried to fill in for Kim, but those are big, high-heeled shoes to fill.
Thank you.
Thank you, the, the board, lastly, the board has copied the departmental activity reports, so unless there are any questions of those, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Okay, next, we have several resolutions on our agenda tonight. First is Resolution Number four seven dash two zero two three, Resolution approving text amendments related to illuminated signs in the Springfield Township zoning resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Resolution Number four eight dash two zero two three, approving an application for a zone map amendment from R four Multiple Family Residence District to R P U D Residential Plan Unit Development and approval of preliminary development plans. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Resolution Number four nine dash two zero two three, declaring motor vehicles located on public or private property in Springfield Township, Hamilton County, Ohio, to be junk motor vehicles pursuant to R C five zero five point one seven three, and ordering the removal of such vehicles pursuant to Resolution Number eight zero dash two zero one two and R C five zero five point eight seven one. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Next is Resolution Number five zero dash two zero two three, authorizing private sale of unneeded and unfit-for-use property in the police department. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Next is Resolution Number five one dash two zero two three, authorizing sale by internet auction of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property in the police department. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Next is Resolution Number five two dash two zero two three, authorizing disposal or salvage of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property in the police department. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Next is Resolution Number five three dash two zero two three, declaring nuisances pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section five zero five point eight seven, at various listed properties within Springfield Township, and authorizing statutory actions necessary to abate the nuisances. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
And finally, we have Resolution Number five four dash two zero two three, establishing assessment for abatement of nuisance and certifying same to the Hamilton County auditor. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Is there any old business before the board?
No.
I do not have any.
Is there any new business before the board?
No.
Not this evening.
Next on our agenda is the portion of our agenda is citizen participation, if there's anyone here this evening that would like to stand and address the board, please come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. Seeing that there are none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.